I'd like to call this meeting of the Ellsworth Planning Board to order. October 30th, 2019. Can we introduce ourselves, please?
I'm Roger Lefarge.
Nelson Gill.
John Fink.
John Delaney.
Lisa Edman.
Before the adoption of the minutes, I would just like to, for the benefit of those who are here, no actual decisions will be made by the board on any, on the matters before us. The first item is a sketch plan, which is an informal look at a proposal, giving the planning board and the applicant the opportunity to talk to one another on a relatively informal basis. There will be a public hearing on this, but in the end, a sketch, no decision is made on the sketch plan. That decisions would come with the pre-application and the final application. As far as the zoning change, the board does not approve of it, make an approval or disapproval of the zoning change. It merely makes a positive or negative recommendation to the city council. And it's the council that has the actual authority to do anything. So with those preliminaries, let me go on to the first, the second order of business, the approval of the minutes from the October 2nd meeting. Is there...
I make a motion, we accept the minutes from the October 2nd, 2019 meeting.
Second?
Yep, second.
Okay. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing done, all in favor, please? Thank you. The next item of business is sketch plan for a major use site development plan and major use subdivision entitled Foster Street Apartments for DC Pre-Development LLC. The proposal is to create a 51-unit apartment complex, two 12-unit buildings and 127-unit buildings on a 6.16 acre parcel, tax map 131, lots 13, 14, and a portion of 17 in both the urban and downtown zones. If someone represented the applicant, please. If you wish, you can, if you wish, you can sit at the table or whatever you choose.
Well, I don't want to shift around too much. I'm happy here, if you're happy to have me here.
Yes.
Okay. So, good evening. My name's Kevin Bunker with Developers Collaborative, Doing Businesses Developers Collaborative Pre-Development LLC. I'm just going to do a real brief project overview. Nancy and David St. Clair from St. Clair Engineering are here, and they're going to do the bulk of the explanation about the site features and the technical matters. But I thought it'd be useful to give a brief project overview of who I am and what we're doing here. We did the Oriole Way project a couple of years ago, came here before you, and I'm sure I know there's some familiar faces that were dealt at the time. We finished that project, it's been a good project for us. We're still working on some final issues to get it just the way we want it, but it's gone well, generally speaking, in a challenging environment, and we had a good experience here, and so we are looking to come back and build some more housing. The housing we're looking to build this time is a little bit different. Oriole Way was family or workforce affordable housing, which we talked about the time. The two pieces I'm proposing this time, one of them is purely market rate, the two 12-unit buildings, those will, rent for those will be about $1,300 a month, and those are intended to capitalize on the job growth that we've seen in Ellsworth, particularly in the last year or so, that we, we know there's a market there, and we think we can, we can meet it with this use. We've built similar buildings in southern Maine, and they've been very, very successful, and we can't realize quite the rent here that we can realize there, but we can realize enough to make them economic. So, that's those 24. And then the 29-unit building will be financed under a similar financing regime as Oriole Way, but it'll be dedicated to senior housing, which in this case means 55-plus. The reason that that, that funding is available now is that if you remember back several years ago, the voters of Maine passed a bond issue to support senior affordable housing, and that, that bond issue was passed, I think 69% by the voters, but it was never signed by the governor. It was, became a political football of sorts and never ended up going anywhere. But that, that bond issue sat on the governor's desk until the new governor came in and she, she signed it. So that, what that did was that freed up money to be available for senior housing across the state. And there are, according to the certain amount of money the state had available, they wanted to do some of it in urban areas and some of it in less urban areas to make sure that it got spread around the state. And what happened was the money that was available for the more urban areas got used up very quickly. It was a little more challenging to find, find projects in rural areas that worked, not because of the demand, but because of the funding formula, that the rules that Maine Housing established. They recently liberalized those rules, and what that did is, I could go into it in great detail if it was interesting, but the end result of it is that there's about 15 to 20 places in the state that weren't particularly well, Ellsworth being one. So, with that being a factor, having a good relationship with the seller of the land, which is the owner of the Rennie Shaw's Plaza, knowing that there was a phase two that we always sort of talked about with some market rate when we were here before, kind of put all those pieces together and said, well, what if we can satisfy both those pieces of demand that we see on the one side, and this is our attempt to do that. The piece of land is very, it's contiguous, but only just. It's not the, not the flattest, most level rectilinear piece of land one could hope for, so the buildings reflect that a little bit. We're kind of fitting them in where we can, but at, at the end of the day, putting housing near goods, services, and jobs, especially this kind of housing, is smart, good policy, so we're, we're trying to make it fit as best we can and try to satisfy those, those demands that we've been seeing since we've been coming to Ellsworth now for a few years.
Before you continue, do you have, do you own the property yet?
The one I'm proposing, no. No, we have it under contract.
You do have it under, you have, okay, so you have right title or interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. But that, that was pretty much the end. I was going to see if there are any questions and then turn it over to Nancy, who's really going to get more into the technical matters.
Are you going, so, is this public money? I know that you mentioned the seniors, it sounds like it's going to be public.
In a sense, yes.
And the other two, will they be private?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
The senior will be public, though?
Yeah, public in the sense that the tax, there's tax credits that are awarded, federal tax credits, which is then sold to private investors. So, yes, and then they're, they're matched with this bond money that the voters approved, which is definitely public money. So essentially, I think, answer your question is yes.
Other questions? Okay, why don't you proceed?
Did you have another question? You look like you might have.
Uh, no, I left too.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I'm available for more questions as well.
My name is Nancy St. Clair, I'm with St. Clair Associates, and I'm here tonight to talk to you folks a little bit more in detail about the proposal for Foster Street Apartments. As Kevin mentioned, the applicant is DC Pre-Development LLC, and we're here tonight to present to you a program for 53 apartments. They're broken into basically two types of home uses, where, as you see on this rendered plan and on your plans, along Foster Street in this area here are the market rate apartments that Kevin mentioned, and along Oriole Way, which is right here, this is the senior affordable housing apartments.
Let me just stop here for a moment. The agenda says it's 51 units.
That is correct. We had provided information in our actual filing that updated it to 53.
Great.
So, and I'll, and I'll tell you a little bit of background on the change. At the time when we submitted our initial application materials for the TRT, the senior affordable housing building hadn't been fully defined internally from a layout from the number of units. It actually had been proposed previously at four stories. We've actually been able to adjust the footprint, reduce it by a story, so it's a three-story building. But in the transition for that, it went from 27 to 29, and that's how we got to 53. So, kind of taking a little bit of a step back, as Kevin mentioned, this piece of property is behind the Ellsworth Shopping Center. To the north, in this area here, is Oriole Way Apartments. Back when Oriole Way Apartments was constructed, there was a connector road that went from Washington Street, which is off the drawing here, and connected down to Foster Street, which is on the bottom of the page there. So with that connector, that created an opportunity to have access off of Oriole Way for this piece of property, and the property already does have frontage along Foster Street. So, given the layout of the property, as Kevin mentioned, it's not a perfect rectangle by any means. You can see that it comes down, it's got a piece here, goes back, there's a little bit here, and then it comes all the way back up into here. Topographically, there are ravines that are located on the westerly end of the property in this area here. So the development area, if you will, is a little bit closer to Oriole Way and along the Foster Street frontage. So in looking at the layout for the site, it made a lot of sense to sort of break these into two distinct types of neighborhoods. So we have the market rate housing on Foster, and we have the senior affordable here, which is adjacent to, that's the last building in Oriole Way Apartments. So, what I'd like to do is just sort of give you a little bit of information on each of the two types of buildings. So the senior affordable housing building is... As I mentioned, the architectural elevations are in process, but this is the elevation for the affordable senior housing buildings. One building, it does have three stories. The benefit to this building is that it has internal shared amenities. So there's a common laundry area, there's an elevator between the floors, et cetera. All the units in this building are one-bedroom units. This building has been successfully constructed in other parts of the state and is very well occupied. There is a, a common area space for just shared enjoyment, but there's also a common space for a resident coordinator who's there periodically throughout the week to help folks with anything that they might need for that. So that is the 129-unit building for the senior affordable housing. This is a photograph of the 12-unit market rate apartment building. This is actually one that was built down in Scarborough. And these have been built very successfully throughout the state. The design is, is quite interesting in that the image that you see here as the, as the entry, on the opposite side of the building is the exact same entry. So it's a 12-unit building, there are four units per floor, three stories, and each entry only provides access to the six building, six units on one side of the building and six on the other. So no more than six residents share the entry area for each side of the building, if you will. The design allows basically every single unit to be a corner unit. So you have the opportunities for windows, you have the opportunities also for, this is the opposite side of the building, for outdoor private space. So the upper stories have decks, and the first floor has a patio for every unit. Each unit is, in this design, a two-bedroom unit, and each have their own internal washer-dryer hookups within the apartments themselves.
There's no elevators on these, right? There's no elevator?
That is correct. The market rate apartments do not have elevators, they have stairwells. The senior affordable does have an elevator in it as well.
In that case, let me ask, what about handicap access?
The units are designed such that the first-floor units do have accessible units for them. The entrances to the buildings are designed to provide ADA access to the entrances to be able to get to the main level.
And senior housing for fire escape?
That would be per the code requirements. I'm, I, internally, I'm not sure how that all works out, but we would definitely work with the fire department to make sure that...
Okay, because places of refuge are required.
Yes.
And we would expect...
Yes, yeah.
And it would be the same with the market rate?
Yes, yep. So, the other, a couple of items that I wanted to, to discuss with you folks are with regard to just sort of the nuts and bolts of the things, if you will. We, as part of the TRT meeting, we did have a discussion with all of the staff heads and representatives from each department, talked a little bit about utilities, stormwater, that type of thing. We are proposing that our utility access for sewer would tie into the Foster Street sewer system. We would be looking to have, there's actually a water line that was built when Oriole Way was built. There's an access stub that was provided for hydrant. A hydrant wasn't installed, but the stub is there. We'd be putting a hydrant there, we'd be providing our water service for the senior building from there, and then providing a new sewer service to connect in to Foster Street here. These buildings would connect directly into the utilities that are in Foster Street. One of the other things that we did discuss during the TRT meeting is stormwater management and drainage, and we did receive a copy of the letter from our downstream neighbors who are very concerned about runoff coming into their site as well. One of the things that we are actively working with the staff on is some alternatives for that, to avoid having to have that connection go down through the ravines, but actually try to tie into or do some work at Foster Street. So that is an active, ongoing discussion that we're having. We do understand the folks downstream are concerned, and the staff has been very clear with their concerns about those ravines and the drainage down there. So, with that, I will turn it over to you folks if you have any questions.
Stormwater, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, so stormwater, you'd be also concerned about the quality as well as the quality?
That is correct.
Because you're going in Union River, yeah?
That is correct. Typically, what we are expecting we would be doing is providing best management practices on the site to provide treatment, but attenuation would be just a pipe discharge down into the street, given the location and the watershed.
Well, what, those two, I, I understand senior, you're probably going to attach it to Oriole Way, that would be the exit, right? For senior housing?
You could go either way on Oriole Way, that's correct.
Okay, how about the other two? How, are they going to be connected? Are they going right to Foster Street?
Yes, they have direct access right onto Foster Street.
Direct, okay.
And I would, I would like to point out on those two buildings down on Foster Street, as you all know, there's quite a bit of grade change across the Foster Street frontage. So we're looking at orientation of those buildings from a three-dimensional standpoint from grading, so they may need to shift a little bit, but that is what we're looking at for that area.
Other questions?
Yeah. First of all, Carrie, have they been given the emails from Rick Lyles and David Burks? I think they should get them, said they have some good questions, either one of them are here. I think they should be given those emails instead of David, I mean, Rick mentioned about somebody reading them today, but I think, I think a lot of what Rick has comments about, we're going to cover, but I think they should receive copies of those, so they're aware of other planning board members' concerns. One, one of my biggest concerns is, and I have a lot of notes here, so get ready, is access management and accessing the two 12-units from Foster Street. I'm rather concerned about those apartments coming out on Foster Street and instead of utilizing Oriole Way to access those two buildings. Oriole Way is right there. I'm not quite sure, from an access management standpoint, that all those cars coming out on Foster Street through the parking lot is, is wise. In our notes, there, there are concerns, also from TRT and from your write-up here, that there's currently a stormwater problem on the Oriole Way project, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is being worked on, but if I understand that our audience is correctly, if, if that is not addressed, this project does not go forward. Is that correct?
Me? Yes.
Sure. Yeah. So I think at some point, whatever that issue is, I mean, I'd like to see information back to the board from an independent engineer that that issue has been solved, as far as, you know, the stormwater goes. I'm interested in, of course, it's, it'll be further down the line, but total trips from the new development, and this is also comes from Rick Lyles, to the total trips from the new development, but also the trips that were generated by Oriole Way and how they impact Washington Street, Foster Street, High Street. Eighteen months, two years ago, we had a project on High Street that required the developer to, to spend money because for traffic light synchronization. I'd like to see what that number of trips was for the Towne Auto parcel was compared to this, because I think we should treat developers in a similar manner, that, that developer was, was required to make a contribution to the city for, for traffic mitigation. Sure.
Staff had commented to us about traffic, asking the question whether we would need to file a DOT traffic movement permit. This type of use is not a high-traffic generator. The Oriole Way trips were all addressed and reviewed as part of a traffic impact study that was done for that project. As far as this project for Foster Street Apartments, we would do the same. So we do have a traffic engineer that is on board, and it's not available yet, but he will be doing a study for that. We do not anticipate, based on the size of the project, even if you combined it with Oriole Way, that we would trigger the need for a traffic movement permit. So your comments and your questions about how this project may have an impact at the intersections at High Street, I will definitely relay to our traffic engineer to make sure that those are addressed in there.
I mean, the Towne Little development did not trigger a traffic movement permit either from DOT.
What was the name of the development?
208 High Street, I think that was the name of it. It's where...
Mattress Farm.
Dental, dental place, Aspen Dental. It's where the Towne Auto lot used to be.
Then, we own Oriole Way, we as a city of Ellsworth?
No.
Private?
Private.
No. This is hearsay, I mean, I've heard just from other people, that there's a lot of trucks at night to go along the Oriole Way. Big trucks, you know, they're going to Shaw's or Rennie's or whatever.
They can't get to Shaw's or Rennie's from there, huh?
Well, they, they take that road, supposedly. I mean, this is what they tell me, I don't know for sure.
I know. Because Oriole Way is actually separated from the mall property.
Yeah, but the thing is, it's a nice new road and it's very wide. I went there the other day, I happened to pick somebody up on there, and I can see where they would, it would be a good trucking route compared to the other routes. I mean, we're going to own that eventually, is it going to be private city?
I don't, I don't think it'd make any sense for a truck to go on Oriole Way to access the Ellsworth Shopping Center.
I don't know, that's all I heard, you know, the people telling me that. Oh, by the way, I guess I, I did have another question for you. Is it going to be the same management group? Combined? Oriole Way, development?
Probably part of it. They'll be, the market rate probably managed differently, but the affordable elderly will be managed by C and C, who's managing Oriole Way.
Okay, so it'll be two different organizations?
Yeah.
Two management, two properties, okay.
There's one, one question on Rick's list that I did want to ask, and I'm curious. So the, the senior housing use case, how is that, so the way he puts it is, how is that encouraged or guaranteed? So, how, how is that bias expressed, that those apartments are only available to senior housing? How's that handled?
Not sure exactly what you're asking, but how is it restricted to seniors? Yes. There's a federal funding program, and it's 55-plus, and the head of the household has to be 55-plus, or they're not allowed to live there.
Okay.
It's, it's tied in all the other use restrictions for the property, then major use restrictions for those kinds of properties are really around the affordability, not so much the age restriction, but there'll, there's a deeded extended use agreement with Maine State Housing Authority that handles all that. Since the financing's contingent upon that being the case.
Is there any sort of sunset on that? Will there always be senior housing, or is this for a period?
Yeah, there's a, the way it works is there's a 45-year, let me back up. There's a 15-year commitment with a tax credit investor, and there's a 45-year extended use agreement, called extended because it's extended past 15 years. But the, the bottom line is that the way the financing is constructed, the subsidy they, I talked about at the beginning, that they give you is actually technically not a grant, it's technically debt, because if it was a grant, it would count as income and it would come off the basis for the tax credit. So it's not a land use issue, but it's, it's the case. So the fact that it's structured as debt gives Maine Housing the opportunity to hold a mortgage. So it's 0% deferred debt. One of the conditions of that mortgage is that the affordability has to stay in there, and the effective economics of the project dictate that you're never going to be able to pay that mortgage back, therefore it never comes under affordability. But certainly, there's a 45-deeded years that is not in question. So the answer is yes, it's, that's what it always is, once you go that route. Thank you.
I'd like to talk a little bit also towards the city staff, is, is cumulative effect on, on stormwater in that area, roads. I mean, I've been preaching this for, for two, two years now, since I've been on the planning board, and, you know, it seems like it's falling on deaf ears, especially now where we have a problem with the first phase of this project. Now we're looking at, they put in 53 more units, and what's the going to be the effect of the, the whole stormwater system right down to Water Street from Foster to Washington? Yeah, what's the effect on, on the roads? I think the city needs to do some work on, on what the cumulative effect is. We have a stormwater plant that, when you tie into it, you have to pay a fee to tie into it, which goes towards maintaining, not the operational costs, from what I understand, for equipment, to pay, pay for upgrades, but I don't think there's any other part of the city's infrastructure that we do, like sewer user fee. I'm just throwing that after the city.
If I could speak to the, the stormwater issue in Phase 1, that's a, and you guys can correct me if you disagree, of course, but that's a construction-related problem. That's not an operations-related problem. That was a problem with the plans and specifications that Nancy drew up were not implemented in exactly the way they should have been, and it's created one issue that, there's been a series of, I guess I'm going to call them Band-Aids to try to fix it, and, and they're not working, and we got to go in and do more work to fix it. But it's a, it's a, ultimately, it's a construction-related issue, it's not an issue of you built the wrong thing in the wrong place or too much of it, it's that the, it wasn't built as designed and now we have to go back in and fix it. And I think we've made a lot of progress, the last rainstorm held up, I think, fairly well, but I'm not comfortable yet that it's completely fixed, and we're going to do more work until it is, but if you guys want to qualify or disagree with that at all, please do, but I think it's a construction-related problem.
In several places, we talk about market rate housing, market rate housing. Yeah, I'd be curious to know, maybe the city can put that together, but, I mean, what is market rates in this area? I mean, in, in the newspaper, there were some monthly prices thrown out. Yeah, I don't know, was that legitimate cost on a monthly basis in the Ellsworth area? I mean, I think the, the article on paper mentioned, I think, $1,300 for the, for the two apartment buildings, and, I don't know, $700, $800 for senior housing. You know, I'd be curious to know, you know, is that a legitimate rate for the Ellsworth There's a lot of people living in this area, I mean, I don't see anything, or, or they're going to be walking past between the two properties, there's still some green space behind there, I know there's ravines and stuff, but you know, what, what's the developer doing about walking past, having open spaces for the tenants to, to enjoy on, on good days? I think as you get further into it, the second map, the, the bigger one, I'd like to see, make sure that you have the Oriole intersection with Foster included on those maps, it was cut off on that second map. Seeing as Oriole Way and the intersection Oriole and Foster, I think is an integral part of this project that should be included in future diagrams.
Oriole Way and Foster, Oriole Way and Washington?
Oriole Way and Foster.
That's on the plan?
It's on, well, page one, it's not on the page two. Partly there, yes, it's, it doesn't include the whole intersection.
We'll take care of that.
You mentioned on the, on the two 12-units, that... You mentioned on the two twelve units, that showed one door on each, on the Foster Street side right now. And how does actually that work? That you go in that door, but you only can access half the units? Is there a wall right down the middle of the hallway?
I can answer that, there's no hallway.
How are the six units on the left side separated from the right side, or?
Yeah, there's a, there's a building drawn into four quadrants, each half of the building is accessed through one stairwell. That's why the building is so economical, is it doesn't have a hallway. That's the, that's kind of the whole point.
So as you, if you look at this floor plan here, you start here at the bottom. So, you're here at this door.
Okay.
Okay. So when you come in at the bottom, here, one apartment, a second apartment, and a stairwell. Go to the next story, same thing. Go to the next story, the same thing. So there's six units that are accessed via this door. On the opposite side of the building, same thing. Come in, unit, unit, stairwell, unit, unit, stairwell, unit, unit.
On the, on your diagram that showed the front and the back, I don't recall the back having an entrance, maybe?
This is one side of the building.
Okay.
On the very opposite side, it's the exact same thing.
Okay, I thought you showed another picture of that.
That's the other side, this side. So this...
Oh, so that's an end, and a front and a back.
So it's got the next in the patio.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna keep beating on the drainage horse for a little bit, just 'cause a comment was made about current performance. David Burke's also one of our members who couldn't be here tonight, I'm gonna quote him in one of his emails here. "My first concern is for stormwater drainage. I visited the site last week after the heavy rainstorm and noticed the area behind the existing new apartment building on Ruth Way was flooded almost to the concrete stoops of the building." According to the Foster Street Apartments, SK6, Plan Sheet 1 of 1, the back of the proposed twenty-nine unit buildings abuts the back of the existing building on Ruth Way. So I just wanted to include that, because that was a current observation range performance.
Nelson, was that an email you received privately?
This is, no, this is, this is a scripted, uh...
Okay.
And this is, I think, in the set that suggested that it be made available.
You mentioned in the senior housing that there would be a laundry area, is there any, gonna be any plans to put a laundry area in the two twelve unit?
Each unit has a washer-dry hookup.
Now, I realize it's an early plan. As far as parking goes, the two twelve units are required to have one and a half parking places per unit. I believe the senior housing is supposed to have one point two, so you have a total, put in the parking lot for the two twelve units, there's a total thirty-five spaces. And if you do one and a half per unit, you need thirty-six, unless you're using one parking place from the other parking lot, which is...
I believe that is an option to seek a waiver on that. If that ends up being the final ultimate number that we reasonably come up with for that, we would be asking for a waiver for that one space on that. But in general, we've tried to provide one point five units per unit.
You should also be aware that it's possible that a waiver would not be granted.
Understood, absolutely understood.
In which case, of course, we wouldn't be able to approve it.
Correct.
Now, Mike, in the page eleven, under the anticipated water supplies, they say there's an existing hydrant located in front of the two proposed twelve-unit buildings on Foster Street. I looked at the map, I think it's on the same side of the road as the units, but I couldn't really tell for sure if it is on the same side of the road as those.
Okay.
That is it for now.
Any other questions?
Yes, I don't know. Looking at the map, okay. Coming down Forest Street, well, behind, you got Oriole Way coming, right? So if we're looking at it north, Shaw's owns the right of Oriole Way, is that correct? But are you gonna own that piece in front of the senior housing?
The area?
To Forest Street?
No, there's a chunk there that we don't own.
You're not gonna own it?
Yeah.
And you have no intention of?
I talked to the, one of the people involved in the ownership, and it's not for sale. Not as it was.
Yeah, because when Joe was talking about greenage and everything, having like a little park or something, that'd be ideal, but...
I'd much rather put the other two buildings there, frankly, but...
Oh, yeah, right. So that, okay, so that's not yours, okay.
Now, one thing that Rick had mentioned, now that we're talking about Shaw's, I'll bring it up, is, you know, what impact would any loading, unloading that goes on at Shaw's and Rennie's have on these apartments, on the senior housing, from a noise standpoint? You know, is that something that Rennie's and Shaw's is gonna have to adjust, because now you have hundreds of people living there, or something to think about?
Yeah, no, I don't think we'd ask them to adjust their hours at all. We haven't had really any issues with that at Oriole Way, so I think it's probably okay. We can definitely look into it a little more, a little closer to Shaw's, so...
And some stores have three, four o'clock AM deliveries. I'm not sure that goes over well with some people that live close by.
Do they have no boundary fencing or anything like that between Oriole Way and Shaw's? There's no boundaries there? Is there anything like that?
We haven't proposed it yet, we can, we certainly have some up on the upper part of Oriole Way, because we have buildings a lot closer to the commercial area here, they're kind of pulled away, so we have that conversation. We also have where the Oriole Way bends, the reason Oriole Way bends is there are underground propane tanks there. If you remember, those tanks used to be above ground, and then the shopping center owner agreed to bury them, and so that they wouldn't be a hazard to Oriole Way, so there's also that issue to think about, in terms of fencing in that area.
No further questions from the board at the moment? Have you had anything further for us?
I appreciate your input and your comments, and we will certainly take that information to heart as we move forward. In addition, I would appreciate if we could get copies of those emails that were sent to the board members, so that we can review them in greater detail with that. We will be coming back with more updated plans and more detailed information for you folks, based on the comments that we've received tonight.
Thank you.
Anything more to say, Kevin?
No, thank you.
Is that the end of the whole presentation?
That's all we've got.
This is a public hearing, anyone may comment upon this matter. I ask that before you speak, you be recognized by the chair, and then go up to the lecture and state your name for the record, and then tell us your concern. Does anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Gordon Workman, President of Elsworth. I just know there's a lot of development going on with apartments and what have you. And our taxes have been going up and up. Now, is this gonna be a burden on our infrastructure, our schools, our systems and what have you in the near future? Because I don't think Elsworth can stand much more. That's my comment.
Thank you. Yes, please come on.
Thank you. Duane Bartlett, the Executive Director of NDI and Elsworth Housing Authorities. We certainly support this project. Our concern is that we're downstream, and the stormwater runoff, and it sounds like there's some concern among the board here, so we appreciate that, but I just want to be, you know, right now, we're taking a lot of stormwater from the shopping center runoff, so the last thing we need is additional runoff, so I appreciate the board considering that, and appreciate the project, so, okay? Thank you.
The ordinance does require that the runoff be reduced.
Yeah.
So...
Currently, the storm runoff, I don't know if everybody's familiar, but from the shopping center, the water is dumped on the side of the hill, and it ends up in our backyard, so... You know, if there's anything the city could do to maybe tie the shopping center's water with whatever plans going on here, that would, that'd be great for us, because it's dragging a lot of silt down, down over the hill, that we have to clean out every third year or so, so...
What, you mean around Foster or around Washington? Which side?
Well, we're at the...
You got Foster and Washington, it's going down the Union River, right?
Yeah, well, the water is being dumped on the side of the, in the ravine, down behind where this project would go.
Okay.
And then it ends up in our, we've got a ditch that it...
So it's behind Foster, yeah.
Right.
You're on that side, not to Washington?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just note, Mr. Bartlett wrote a letter to the planning board, I would just ask that the developer receive a copy of that also, please, Karen.
There are no one else, I shall close the public hearing. As I said at the outset, there are no decisions made on this sketch plan, and with an opportunity for feedback between the board and the applicant and the public. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you. I would move back with some updates.
Yes. The next item of business is a request of the city planner for recommendation to the city council of proposed amendments to the City of Elsworth official land use. The proposal brought forth by Spencer Properties LLC is to consider the rezoning of land from the neighborhood zoning district to the urban zoning district, for the purpose of allowing future construction of office and warehouse storage buildings and employee housing. The rezoning includes four point four six acres of tax map, forty-two Lot 7, located on Lake... Planner!
You all have the maps, I think I'll turn it to the audience to see.
Yes.
This is a colored version of the map of the, that advertises the proposed zone change. The developer came and requested a zone change for a project that he had in mind, that would expand the business in Commerce Park. So that first parcel, and you can see, the large parcel that is oddly shaped along Lake's Lane was, is for sale, and the proposal is to purchase the parcel and expand the business. And I will let him explain, you know, his intentions. In response to the thought of perhaps changing the zoning for this one parcel, we've added two more that would make sense if this one was changed, to change the smaller one that's in the middle of the large one, and the one that's at the top to the north, that is right now, I used it as non-conforming water zone, it's in, it's a warehouse. And so if we were gonna change the zone from neighborhood to urban, it would make sense to change that one as well. But that, so that's why you have it as four and four A. So if four was acceptable, then four A should be considered. If four was not acceptable, four A is off the table, so that's all I want you to think about. And so perhaps if that's it, Bob Ryan comes and explains this part here.
I'm Brian Spencer, owner of Wallace Vents, and owner of Spencer Properties LLC, which is the holding company for our real estate up there, it's my nephew Jake, who's my partner in both.
Yes, yeah, Jake Taylor with Wallace Vents.
So, when we finalize the land, let's just get right down to it. So I appreciate everyone coming, I really want everyone's input of what they think. I would probably come too, if I'd have known the stuff like this would have happened. When we came up for sale, we, as you guys, were thinking, geez, who might move in there? And a high percentage of the reason we're looking to buy it is so no one else would move in, and do things approaching our problem. We have potential ideas down the road of, and again, that's down the road, there's no great plan right now. We have thought, maybe an office building, potentially, the reason for the zone change was, it was prohibited to build a metal building. There's always a chance we'd wanna build something that would be low-end storage, just basic storage buildings, low-impact, and anything we did, we always try to be good neighbors, anything we did, we'd start on our side, and we'd go into the woods from our side. We would always leave a buffer on Lake's Lane, and our trucks would always continue down Commerce Park, and I'm gonna come out onto, you know, Lake's Lane, so, and we may never do anything with it. But that's potential down the road. And anything we did, of course, would have to be, you know, we go with the city guidelines where the city needed it. But as of right now, a lot of it is, we wanna know who's behind us, and we thought, well, the best person behind us would be us. So that's kind of an overview, Jake, anything you wanna say about?
Yeah, I'd just say, you know, with, our sole purpose and intention of that was, you know, just for future opportunities, you know, we don't have a specific plan outlined. It's just for opportunity down the road, and if we have the chance to buy that, just to have that right in our backyard, we just wanted to know what the full potential of the property was, thus the zoning change. But with everything we do, and we've had a chance to talk with multiple landlord owners on Lake's Lane now, and it's been great to hear their opinions on it, and I think, at the end of the day, regardless of what the opportunity is there, it is very important to us that we are good neighbors, that we're viewed as a good-standing business in the community, as well as citizens. We both live here, we don't ever wanna live in a place where we can't walk out our own door without people upset with us, so we are asking for the zoning change, but in respect to everyone else that's in the proximity of the land.
Questions?
Yes, I'll start off. I'm a little confused with the two applications that we have, Jeff. On the first one, we have a map with some, with Lot forty-two seven, about two-thirds of it colored in blue. It looks like a piece of it has been excluded. But then on the second, the application you gave us, it looks like forty-two seven, the entire lot is included in this zone change request. Please clarify.
It's a good question, I understand that there is a little confusion between those two applications. The applicant is not proposing to own the whole of that lot, that's why they were asking for the zone change on a part of it. And so when we showed the whole thing, it's not divided yet, so we're showing it as the whole parcel changing, and that's why we added the other two. So you're right, it is a little confusing in that regard, but in the, in the public announcement, we basically just showed the entirety of all three lots as the proposal. And we understand that, you know, that may need to be adjusted, that we needed to come back with a, with a different proposal that will fit the application.
Well, the part that's not colored... Well, the part that's not colored in blue here, I looked at tax maps, I think is where 21 Lake's Lane is, the Haskells live, I think.
Yes.
Is that correct?
There is a house there now on the, on the entire parcel, and apparently they're selling it and retaining the house. So it does split the lot at some point, you know, in the process of, of the project materializing.
Because that entire 42.7 is 6.49 acres, and all the paperwork, it talks about 4. something, 4.46 acres. If that piece, if the Haskell piece was cut off, do you propose that that is, that their house is changed, the zone is changed for their house too?
Haskell House is the one on the south, the southern end.
That's the one in the middle.
Oh, that's the one.
No, Rossburn, Jordan, Rossburn, Jordan is a 21 Lake's Lane.
Let me ask a question. Who currently owns the property?
He's owned by Rossborough. She has the first house in on the right and has the whole 6.5 approximate acres. And she wants, and she's the one that's selling it.
Is there a?
She's selling four and a half of her six.
Is there a purchase and sales agreement?
Yes.
Then we have an issue of Lot 42.5, which apparently is where a warehouse is built now, that is non-conforming under the current zone. That's a whole separate issue. But the thing that strikes me the most, and I want to say, I certainly don't have any issue with Mr. Spencer. He has a great business. But to change this piece of property from, from neighborhood to urban, and you gave us a spreadsheet of some of the uses that would be allowed under that zone change. I'll mention some that I think are, I wouldn't want to live there. We have a bar. Somebody could put a bar in there. You could put in a small retail space up to 15,000 square feet. You could put in a community shopping center up to 100,000 square feet. Light industry, a gas station, automobile sales and service. I mean, that is purely a residential neighborhood. And we're not, I picture a zone change extending the urban zone a little bit over into the neighborhood zone. But this street, for the most part, about two-thirds of it borders the Commerce Park, which basically has the same zone restrictions as a neighborhood zone. So we're not extending the urban zone. I mean, you have this Commerce Park right in the, in the middle of the urban zone over to the neighborhood zone. The first part of Lake's Lane is paved, then it goes into a gravel road, which, which I believe, according to a letter that was written, is a private road, but the houses have a road association. I pay for the maintenance. And if I'm not mistaken, the zone that this piece of property is in now allows residential. I mean, obviously it allows residential, allows multifamily. It allows offices, I think. It does not allow warehouses. So, I mean, the wording of the, the request is kind of confusing. A little misleading is that we're, we want to be able to provide for housing, but it already allows housing. I think it, I'll leave it to Dwight. I mean, I read the, I thought it allowed, you know, an office building, which the zone change says we want to allow offices, which I think it does now. The only difference is it'll now allow warehouses.
May I comment, Mr. Dwight?
Sure.
I think if there is, you know, we, we asked for this request based on the, the steps that are already in place as far as zoning goes. If there was a more specific way to go about, you know, pinpointing like our, our potential future needs, I think we'd even do that. This seemed like the, the, the next step to go was to go to this. I think on top of the uses that are already listed out, the only one that potentially doesn't fall under the zoning right now would be that storage warehouse portion. Obviously, we can't make 100% guarantees for anything of the future, but we certainly have no interest in opening a bar, so, you know. So the, so the, really the only, only piece that would be of interest to us would be that storage warehouse space. But I understand that's covered under the umbrella of a larger section of zoning, so.
It doesn't really matter what you intend to do with it. You know, if, if this went through your body, you could sell it next week to somebody who did put a bar in.
Sure, sure. But, and I guess all I'm trying to say is just the, that was, it seemed like the only next umbrella that would cover the potential use of what we're looking for.
May I say something?
Yes.
No, I appreciate your, your concerns about it, and certainly you have to look at the whole picture, and it's the potential, not just the, the proposal that's, that's being discussed right now. So that's why we put together those charts, so you can see. The, the zone was chosen, this change to the urban zone was chosen because it is a neighboring zone. It is basically an extension of the zone. But it also, it also allows for all of the uses that they were proposing in the future, which included residential warehousing and office. It's the only zone that really you could put them all in. The other, the other option was to extend the Commerce Park zone into a, a portion of that lot, if they were to purchase the lot, where a warehouse expansion could happen, and then the remaining would stay in the, in the neighborhood zone. So that's, that's a possibility that we've talked about. It came later on. It was interesting to see the, the reaction of, of the neighborhood. It's very clear, and I'm sure we'll hear, we'll hear about that in the, in the public hearing. So that, our thinking on, on this has, has evolved over time during this whole application process. So I understand, you know, the concerns, and, and we're trying to come up with a solution that may work for both, but.
May I ask a question of you, Jeff?
Sure.
Would there be any way to configure it as proposed or prohibit any access from the, redesignated properties to Lake's Lane and to require a buffer of a set size all along that line of the property?
I don't think that we, we have the authority to do that. I mean, the applicant could pledge to do that, perhaps in a, in a D covenant or something. The, the idea of doing it like that, it sounds like if we had, if we had the provision of contract zoning, then that's something that we could put in a contract for the rezoning itself. But the kind of provisions you're talking about are more in line with the, the actual project that will come, would come to the planning board later. And the applicant could certainly, could certainly agree to those things. But I don't know if we can put it in, we can't really attach it to a zoning change that I'm aware of.
Further questions? In that case, this is a public hearing. Anyone may speak on this matter. As I said, before you get up and speak, be recognized by the chair. Go to the lecture and state your name for the record. And there are a lot of us here. So let me say that if you, if you start to repeat something that someone else said, I will cut you off, so that everyone will have the chance to speak without us going beyond 10 o'clock, which is our normal cutoff time. So who wishes to speak first? Please.
My name is Julie O'Neill, and I'm a resident of Lake's Lane. Where I live on Lake's Lane is not directly impacted by the proposal here, but I am part of a neighborhood. And that neighborhood, I think, is represented well at this meeting tonight. We want it, we want our neighborhood to stay as it is. Somebody here said that, that part of this proposal to change the zoning was to expand the use of the Commerce Park. I know that Wallace has already expanded several times in, within the Commerce Park. I also go back to almost 20 years ago when I moved to Lake's Lane, two weeks later, to find out that the Commerce Park was happening down at the, at the bottom of the hill. And I, and I think that, if I'm correct, that the city ended up giving away some of the lots in the Commerce Park, because there was not a tremendous amount of interest at that time. And I also wonder what, what the available property within the Commerce Park without expanding it is. Are there opportunities for these gentlemen to, to utilize the Commerce Park? I think there are so many problems with this, with the increase, and, and even though we can sit here and be assured by the people who are proposing this, we know what happens over time, and the best of intentions sometimes go awry. And I just, I'm, I'm very concerned about the impact that will have on everyone, the fact that there's a non-conforming part to it. I think that sometimes the, the city of Ellsworth engages in somewhat reckless rezoning to, to suit their own purposes, and I hope that that is not the case with this project. And, and it was said that these three parcels would make it consistent with the area. I don't know what area they're making it consistent with. We have a neighborhood, and we would like to keep that section consistent with the neighborhood rather than something else, an extension of the Commerce Park.
If I may just comment on your comment. The issue of the non-conforming use, that is a use that is, was at one time presumably an allowed use in the area. Zoning changes, and that is a use that's no longer allowed. It is grandfathered, there are restrictions on expansion and so forth, but that use will remain.
Is, is that the Sinclair property? With the big, the warehouse that they have and, and adjacent property that's undeveloped? Is that, that whole, is that part of this whole deal?
Jeff?
It's the lot right there at the top of the proposed change.
The Sinclair lot, the Sinclair lot is 2.94 acres.
Okay, and that's the lot not including the building that's on it, or does it?
Well, it would include the building.
Oh, it does? Okay, so that's part of this potential change.
If it were to change.
Okay. So that brings, that brings it up even further, up, up the road.
Yeah, and what would happen if that, if the new zone allowed a warehouse, then the ware, that building would no longer be non-conforming. But it doesn't change either way.
Right, right. Well, I think I speak for everyone here, but I'm sure other people are going to want to speak also. We want to keep our neighborhood the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Who else wishes to speak? Okay, come on up, please.
My name is Brian Richardson, and my wife and I own a piece of Lake's Lane that would be directly affected by the change. We bought the place back in 92 for my father, mother-in-law. We wanted to be close to hospitals and stuff, so we moved them in there. And though we paid attention to sell it, we saved it in case our daughter, after school, we wanted to stay in the area. If, according to the gentleman from Wallace, they don't have plans to do anything now. But like Mr. Delio said, what their plans are, they can sell this. They buy it, and once it's changed to urban, they have no further control over it. They seem like nice people, and they run a nice operation up there, but who knows what will come in the future if you change this to urban? We like the neighborhood. We like looking out and not seeing a warehouse. We don't have security lighting at nighttime. We don't see, you know, pavement and the entire area across the road from us. We see trees and a quite lovely log cabin across the road. We would much prefer, this would stay as a neighborhood zone and not an urban zone where anything can be put in. That list was quite surprising, what was allowed in the urban zone. Like I said, there's many things there that we would not like to look at across the road, so thank you for your consideration.
And if I may comment, I wish you luck getting your daughter to stay in the area. I did not, I was not successful with mine.
Mine is here now in that, so, so far I'm being lucky, but maybe you could contact my daughter and convince her to be back. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Howard Carter, and I own one of the pieces of property across from this. A couple of things, no disrespect to anybody, and I know Wallace Tents is saying this is their intention. But if this is rezoned, what since rezoned, game's off. They can do what they want with it. I moved here, I served 20 years in the military, and I moved down here because it's so peaceful down on the road. I can go home, we have the ducks, we have the deer, we have everybody going from one side to the other in the woods. I also moved my parents up here in retirement, so they can relax and enjoy it. As it is right now, where Wallace Tents comes out at the end of the road, there are several occasions, and again, I'm not bashing anybody, where if I'm going up Lake's Lane, once I come across railroad tracks, or if I'm coming from Lake's Lane, that stop sign pretty much doesn't exist. So I don't want that on my Lake's Lane side. And I know they're saying that they're not going to put it out there, and I'm not saying that they would, but the opportunity is there. We have a peaceful, quiet neighborhood. Everybody gets along along that stretch. People walk, their kids, they take them on their tricycles, they pull them in the wagon. It is peaceful, quiet neighborhood, and I really do not want to see this changed. According to this map, and as y'all can see or everyone else can see, supposedly up in here is already redeveloped for urban, to where they can expand that way. If they're already here, why not expand that way instead of back this way? Because I know even now, it creates a lot of noise from when they're in the morning loading or whatever. So the woods, as it is now, gives us enough buffer. If they start coming into that, it's going to make it even worse. And I'm going to let the other ones talk that live there more directly, but I do not want to see it changed. I'm happy, it's peaceful, and it's quiet, so.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
If you look at the map, just to clarify something, that lot at the end of the road, the Commerce Park, the big one, no, the, the one in the kind of orange?
Here?
Yes. There's nothing on that lot right now? It's undeveloped?
I was told it was, and it's, I, I can't guarantee it, but I was told it was already urban, so for future Commerce Park expansion or something. That's just what I was told.
None of the Wallace buildings are on that big lot?
No, they, they're right here.
Correct.
Adjacent, they own here, so why not just expand here and leave this zone in the way it is?
That'd be up to the city.
Right.
If I remember correctly, there may have been wetland issues on that.
Wetlands in there, that's why that was left as the remaining land when we did the subdivision.
By the sounds of it, that big lot there could not be developed, or not easily developed.
Oh, the back path, yeah.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Someone else? Yes, sir.
We're John Mulvaney, live in 36 Lake's Lane. We are directly across from the, this project that's going to take place. We listen to them work seven days a week. We see their lights through the very limited trees that are now existing between our property and this car's street. My wife, they were working at 6:00 yesterday morning. We hear their trucks going, running all the time. When we first moved there, nothing was here. This was a wonderful neighborhood to live in. We're not against them, they're wonderful people. They do a lot for this community. They're talking about putting housing potentially in this property. If they, housing they put in, which is, they can do anything they want to, it sounds like, by their, where, how would we, or would. like, by their, where, how would we, or would they be limited to, as they said, taking the traffic back off from the business park? Or would it be, have access and no way for us to control how much traffic comes down our small street, which is only twenty feet wide, has, is very poorly maintained by the city? I have to listen to the call, we call all the time for repairs that never take place. It's a, it is a quiet place, but it will be, won't be very quiet if this takes place. Is there, we have no control on lighting. Our neighborhood was a pretty dark neighborhood, it's not anymore so much for us. It's just a neighborhood to live in. Our son did leave. Our son doesn't come back because of job opportunities and whatnot. We've actually offered him our house in the future, and he said no. Doesn't want to come back to live in the city of Ellsworth because of, he doesn't believe it will be a neighborhood for very long, because of what's taking place. Ellsworth is turning into basically a business-oriented, not a neighborhood. And that bothers me, and that bothers our wife, that there could be houses put in there, for family homes that could be put in there, which is a tax, raising a tax fund for the city of Ellsworth. If this goes something different, I assume it'll be classified as different taxes. There are different things they can apply for where they're taxed, they don't have to pay taxes, or the taxes would be reimbursed to them if they do improvements on their property. I don't have any of those benefits. Our taxes keep going up, and we get basically zero from the city of Ellsworth. And it's just sort of, but they're a great company, they do a wonderful job, they, it's just the end of traffic. The intersection to Lakes Lane into Route One is a mess. Between six-thirty and nine-thirty in the morning, good luck getting out. Someone sometime is going to get seriously hurt in that intersection. When the, the development went on the end of the road, the city promised to do some work on the road, never took place. When the Business Park went in, there was an option to have a street light at the end of the street, never took place. Traffic light at the end, never took place. Getting in and out of that property, off Lakes Lane onto Route One to go to work, is risky every day. My wife and I do it every day. You could be back up behind Wallace truck, or whomever, your neighbors, you could sit there and wait. I've waited as much as seventeen to twenty minutes to get off the street. The other alternative is to go right, and turn, turn down onto the Shore Road, and go through the Shore Road, which is a nice, people don't probably want me doing that, to go to work. It's just a neighborhood, and I would like to see it stay as a neighborhood. I understand that business is good, and it's good for Ellsworth, but at some point, it's a neighborhood's work. You need employees, you need people to work in this town, you need people to, to, I know they're having issues with getting workers, so housing is an issue. They would like to potentially propose putting housing in, but which way would the traffic come from this housing? And could our street handle another ten cars, fifteen cars? No.
And even if the road could, the end of the road, that traffic issue was already there. And that also brings up, if you change it to urban, what is it going to do with city water? Water does not come up that road.
Or sewer.
Or sewer. We actually, I think the last house on the road is tied into the sewer, but we're not tied into the water. You know, that brings up all of that, if you bring, you know, if you change it to urban and you do develop it.
Which we would have no control over.
You know, I know what their plans are, or, you know, but again, it could be sold again, and then somebody could put in a bar or whatever. Would then the city provide water? Believe by the laws, if you bring it by the house, we have to tie in, even though we have two wells. All of those are concerns for the neighborhood.
Traffic is a danger.
Noise and traffic.
We listen to their business, we don't complain because it's a business, it's good business, but we have to listen to them seven days a week. There is not much of a buffer between them and us. It's very small, limited, in front of trees. We see their lights, they're on all the time, twenty-four-seven. We don't complain or say much to them at all, because it's a great business, and they do a lot for this community. But it's been, it's not really, it's, you guys are, or it's, it could be turned into where we were going to Savinley and not live there. You have anything else? In the neighborhood, the people that live on Lakes Lane are wonderful people. We know most everybody that's here, they're here to represent our neighborhood, that we would like to stay. Nobody has any complaints with your Commerce Park. The piece of property you guys were talking about at the end of the Commerce Park, which I believe the city has given away to another organization, another property organization that they were talking about developing, or, I'm not sure of that, they were just, that was just rumors. And the Hasbro House is right in the middle of this rezoning piece of property that you guys were talking about. And the non-conforming piece of property that was on the end was built as a garage for a homeowner to head work on his race car. And then it's changed from that, now Sinclair's on it and runs a business out of it. And we deal with their traffic, and we've called the police several times. There are many, many vehicles that work for Sinclair that go up and down our street. There is, it's supposed to be speed limit, but obviously, nobody cares. You can check, and we've called the police department several times for complaints. I actually confronted someone from Sinclair's in the middle of the street, and it wasn't a fun episode. But we're not, so there are issues, I'm saying, on our street that we try to take care of. We just don't want to have, have our neighborhood disappear. It's nice, it's outside of town, I work on, we both work on, on MDI and Trenton. It's nice, it's, it's just becoming very inconvenient to live there. And this is, you know, you're rezoning, you could put anything, while you're rezoning more, anything they want there. So what happens to our neighborhood? What happens, you could force us to sell. And our tax basis be, we'll, we'll go, we'll leave. If that's what you, the city council board, want, then just tell us that, so we can start to sell our property and move. You have any questions?
Thank you very much. Someone else? Yeah, I saw the hand go to you, sir. Yes.
My name's Stan Pelletier. I live with my family on the end of Lakes Lane, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. So anyone who lives on Lakes Lane, I, you know, a lot of us are here tonight. We've, we've put into the community there, we've put into the neighborhood, and it's where we've chosen to, you know, raise our families. And, you know, our kids learn to ride their bikes on the street, we see bear running across the street. You know, anyone who lives there, it's sort of, I found it a little comical almost to see this suggested change to characterize the zone as urban, because it's, you know, I think of it as a rural place. When I tell people from away where I live and what it's like, I say, I live in the woods at the edge of town. And that's, that sounds pretty rural to me, to live in the woods, so, you know, it's, it's part of a lifestyle that we've opted for, we've chosen to be here in Ellsworth, we've chosen to settle here and raise our families here. And this neighborhood is part of why we are where we are. So I want to reiterate what I, I've heard other people say, too, the Wallace business being good for the community, and I certainly agree with that, and I appreciate them as good neighbors. And to me, the way we are now is as neighbors, but if we were going to look at this zoning change, it would be more like having somebody squatting in the front yard rather than a neighbor. It would just, it would change the, potentially, the makeup of the neighborhood, which now constitutes Lakes Lane, and, and turn it into potentially something else that it's not. You know, I wish Wallace all the best with their, with the business that they have right now, and I like them right where they are, and, and not in, in the front yard, so. That's all I've got.
Someone else?
Good evening, my name's Sean Smith, I own seventy-four Lakes Lane. I own both sides of the road, so the property that they're proposing to buy directly impacts my property. I bought my house two years ago specifically because of where it is. I used to show everybody down in New York before I moved up here, the Google Earth was my screensaver, because the little red dot in the middle of the woods is my home. A lot of people, I don't really know the Wallace family, I've only been here two years, don't have a problem with them really, I'm just not looking to get it rezoned where there's no woods across the street from my house. And as the non-conforming piece of property, if this goes through, and then Sinclair's goes through, then once it's changed, it won't just be that building, then they can do what they want there. Right now, it's a steel building, I understand was originally built for a guy to work on his race car. But there's also four eighteen-wheelers sitting there, the place is never taken care of, and their drivers have no idea what twenty-five miles an hour is. I can honestly say, for the first time since I moved there, last week I seen an Ellsworth Police Department car come up and down the road, and I'm figuring it's because they've been getting all sorts of phone calls because of this. Like I said, it's, I, I don't understand why they can't continue on Commerce Park. I do understand, I guess there's wetland issues, I've never been in the woods over there, but I know across the street from my house, it's all wetlands too, so how much could they do with it? My big fear is you rezonate, then they sell what they don't want to use, and then what ends up across the street from my house? Like I said, I bought my house, eighty percent of the reason I bought it is because it's a dead-end road, and there's nothing but woods. I can go home right now and pretty much have to stop before I get to my driveway because there's going to be something crossing the road. It's nice, it's peaceful, and it's dark. I don't want warehouse lights and apartments for, you know, for workers. And like I said, they can say what they're going to do, but once you own the property and the zoning changes, then you can do whatever you want. So, I thank you very much for your time.
Someone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Eleanor Richardson, married to my husband, Brian Coles, and I just want to kind of build on what he said a little bit, too. Seeing that list of what could go in there has really scared me, because before it was just going to be like this, and he's just going to have maybe another storage building, which didn't sound so bad. But we live in Bar Harbor, we live in Town Hill, and there was a, a place that wanted to go in right next door to us. And it was supposed to be a small brewery, and they were going to do a couple of tours, and it was going to be very small. And let me tell you, folks, that didn't happen. It's huge, it is now huge. They have put in a restaurant, they have amplified outdoor music now, which we have to listen to, which we have complained about because it's so loud. In our town, it says there's not supposed to be any outside amplified music. They don't do a thing to them, nothing. When they, they were supposed to use the well that was already there, they ended up, it wasn't enough because they made it too big, so they drilled another well. That other well has now dropped our water table two feet. Houses down behind us that have gone in, residential houses, now have to go down seven, eight hundred feet just to get water, because they're drawing so much out. And then the discharge that they have, sometimes we can smell it from our house. That's no way to live. That's why we bought that property up there, because it was a dead-end street. And it's in town, but yet it's not, and it's great. And I urge you to keep it that way, and I really appreciate you saying and recognizing that when they buy it, all bets are off. They can do whatever they want with the rest of that property. So I urge you, please, please, don't let this go through. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to speak?
First hand blue shirt in the back.
Go ahead. They were ruled you, I'm sorry. Fred Berry, water in Lakes Lane. Bought a piece of land up there twenty-six years ago. I think we were the third house on the subdivision at the time. And I know why everybody else is here, I know a lot of different reasons that you've heard tonight. I'm here for the distrust of the city of Ellsworth. That's probably not a good way to start out my conversation, but I will let you know that the person that owned the subdivision, when we moved into it, when he sold the fourteenth lot, he sent everybody a letter saying, I no longer have any responsibilities for the road or to take care of it or anything else, it's all yours. The Road Association was formed, I went to the city, got a map of the subdivision, there were a pile of things that were supposed to be done in order for him to turn the road over, not only to the city, but to the residents. I can't tell you whether it was the planning board, or the city council, or whoever, but there were all sorts of signatures on it saying, everything's met, it's ready to go, you can get rid of it. And at the time, Tim King was the city manager here, we met with him, and found out that it was missing a couple culverts, it was missing the telephone pole, and I believe that the rock down by the Alvegs, the road is not wide enough to support traffic there, let alone fourteen houses that have just been built up there. That rock is still there, that road has not been taken care of. I think it was overlaid once, maybe, in the twenty-six years that I've been here. And I understand that that rock can't be moved because it's of some historical value, along with the ledge up there that's on the other side of the road. Those two people I know very well, they have a fantastic business, and they are great for the city of Ellsworth. I believe they're also great for the parts of the state, too, if I remember well. If they want to stay on that side of the Commerce Park, that's fantastic. Lakes Lane cannot handle more traffic, more people. With everything that's been said tonight about what it could become, boy, wouldn't it be nice to have a gas station on our road?
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to wait to get out into traffic to get down to Citco or Trenton But, I mean, that, that is just absurd to think that there's going to be an additional amount of traffic put on that. To go along with the distrust factor that I mentioned before, once it's signed over, once it's changed to a different use, once it's sold to somebody else, there's no control there. Living on Lakes Lane for twenty-six years, we've taken over the dirt road that wasn't built to specs. We donate money every year to make sure that that road is suitable to get police services, fire services, ambulance services up there, of which we get none. Like was mentioned before, every now and again, a police officer comes up. I've had two or three at my house because my daughter played soccer and softball, and one of the police officers was a coach, and he would used to come up and turn his blue lights on, everybody got excited about it. Fact of the matter is, there's very few services offered up there, and the road is not able to handle any additional amount of traffic. And if you approve, or whoever approves this, you open the door to all sorts of other issues coming into the area. And that's all I have to say.
And let me, let me reiterate that the planning board's role is simply to make positive or negative recommendations to the city council, which has the authority to make the actual change. So I'm not actually directing you to attend the city council, but it would be in your interest. Anyone else? Yes, please.
Do you have to go in?
Yes, you may.
I have to listen to this, and I appreciate it very much. I would never want to be the guy, or ever be the business, that makes people uncomfortable or unhappy living where they are. As far as I'm concerned, withdraw the change on my, on our behalf. If we ever did buy it, we're buying it as the zoning as it is, and we will stay off your side, and you guys are great people, I appreciate everything you said, and I appreciate it very much. And I always want to be the good neighbor, and I want it ten years down the road, you guys, you know, those guys at Wallace, they've always been around you guys, and they've always looked out for us, so I want you to know, we will look out for you guys. We're part of the neighborhood, too. We really are. We're, you know, and like I said, that's half the reason we were looking at this to begin with, we didn't want anyone else moving in there, doing stuff. It's true. Now, that's, that was the first thing in our heads. So we're, we're in this with you, we're, we're not in this against you, okay? I want you to all know that.
We still have intentions with carrying forth with the purchase and sale, and I think if there's anything that we could say to the residents of Lakes Lane, that we would make sure that anything that we did in there would conform to the neighborhood structure of what's in there right now. We, we have no intention of building some, something that just goes against what's in there now. So, yeah, we would withdraw our recommendation to change the zoning on our behalf.
And I think it's really nice, you guys have a nice neighborhood. You all know each other, you take care of each other, and I think that's really, really nice. And I don't ever want to be, and, and, my name ain't thrown out there as someone who upset anyone, because, just for the record, I live on Posture Street, so. I give fifty some units talking about the red button behind my house, so I appreciate what you're going through. I really do. I get very, very much. So, again, we're in this together. We honestly are not the enemy we never want to be. And if you ever have anything you need to ever ask us about, don't be afraid. Come right around the corner, right into our office. If our guys are ever doing anything or anything ever upset you, it was never on purpose. You can always come and ask us and talk to us really seriously.
Jeff? Jeff, does this mean that-
Well, I think that's a nice conclusion. And just so everybody understands, just because it came to planning board doesn't mean it has to go to city council, and I think it ends here. We don't need to take it any further, and, you know, the issue's resolved. Certainly, they have the right to purchase the property with the current zoning and do things on that property that are currently zoned.
And I would like to express my appreciation to Mr. Spencer, as far as, I'm sorry, I forgot your, the other person's name. But I, I mean, I appreciate that you've listened to the citizens. I appreciate the citizens coming out. I think we've had more people here tonight than we have in the last year to come to the planning board, so, I mean, I appreciate you. You're taking the time out of your busy schedules, come express your, you know, what your concerns are to the city, and again, express my appreciation. And I know I speak for the planning board, that we appreciate Mr. Spencer's role in this.
As chair, let me say that this has been a pleasure. Usually, when we see this many people, it's not quite as smooth, the resolution, and thank you all for coming, and-
Does this mean that this is a dead issue? That this, the rezoning is not going to go to the city council?
That's correct. Yes.
Is there, so you have no recommendation for or against?
No, because you folks have all resolved the issue. And there is no longer, as I understand it from the city planner, a request for rezoning. So it has gone away. Thank you very much. So item four A is off, is off for you, chair. And there are no my laws to sign. Is there a motion to adjourn, please?
I think not.
Oh, I hope you have to draw something to-
Nah, I'm just making a motion, many people do.
Woman favor adjourned, please.
Yes.